I will call this meeting of the Christiansburg Town Council to order. We will take a moment of reflection, and I hope in your thoughts and reflections that you will keep in mind the coastal citizens in Virginia, North Carolina, and South Carolina that are going to be adversely affected and all that may be affected. Thank you. Thank you. Now as we all stand at the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm going to ask Steve Hopper if he would lay the citizens' flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to move the, or actually switch the citizens' comments with the introductions and presentations. Now I'll make a motion. Let's switch these.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Harry. Okay, so introductions will be five, citizens' comments will be six. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That is six oh, thank you very much. We have no public hearing scheduled for tonight. The next item is our consent agenda, which is the approval of council minutes of October 21st, 2018, and August 28th, 2018. Schedule a public hearing on October 23rd, 2018, for a conditional use permit request by RAB Property One LLC for a public amusement business located at 100 Arbor Drive Northeast, Tax Map Number 406-8-41, in the B3 General Business District. And the third is a notice of an award for the contract in the amount of $1,652,000 to DLB Enterprise LLC for the College Street Sanitary Sewer Repair and Replacement Project.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussions? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Very good. That is six oh, thank you. Introductions and presentations. Aquatics Director Terry Colwell will be introducing some very, some Virginia Tech personnel. Some new, some not.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. I am honored this evening to introduce a team of individuals who are contributing to the overall success of the swimming and diving program at our Aquatic Center. The public-private partnership with Virginia Tech has planted a collegiate athletic seed for our town. Olympic caliber athletes train at the Aquatic Center daily, and after eight years of this collaboration, I continue to be amazed by their leadership skills and physical abilities. Joining us tonight are Virginia Tech Senior Associate Athletics Director Danny White, Swimming and Diving Head Coach Sergio Lopez, and Diving Head Coach Ron Piamonte. Mr. White joined Virginia Tech Athletics staff in 2007, and he earned his Bachelor of Science degree in Finance from the University of South Carolina. Danny received his Masters in Education from Virginia Tech and a PhD in Policy, Governance, and Globalization, also from Virginia Tech. Danny is a former student athlete and men's swim team captain at the University of South Carolina. He is a Boston Marathon qualifier and earned a graduate certificate from Virginia Tech in collaborative community leadership. He was also named the 2013-14 Favorite Faculty at Virginia Tech. Mr. White is a native of Dallas, Texas, and currently lives in Blacksburg with his wife Meredith and their four children. Our Virginia Tech diving, swimming and diving coaches will now be introduced by Mr. Danny White.
Well, thank you all for having us, and we had, my wife and I had four kids, so we could have our own little relay team at home. We have a full life, but we're very grateful for it. Before I introduce our coaches to you, I just want to make sure you here from Virginia Tech Athletics how grateful and happy we are with the partnership with the Aquatic Center in Christiansburg. Between the three of us, primarily our two coaches, we have seen pools from all around the world, probably every continent, and I can tell you, we have a very, very good pool. It's a fast pool, great diving facility, and it's very good both for our student athletes and hopefully for the citizens of your community. And I remember as a little kid being a part of the swim team, you walk around and you see the fifteen, sixteen-year-olds and the seventeen, eighteen, and maybe some of the college kids and whoever's coming in to compete after that. And it's just like education and sports, you can really cast a vision for younger folks with who is around them and who is sharpening them and who they're getting to observe. So I hope for the younger kids at the pool, when they get to see some of our student athletes, some of those who have succeeded at the highest levels around the world, that it's hopefully spurring them on to think and dream about something. And I know for a fact it happens, it happened to me, and I know it happened to our two coaches here. So primarily, thank you for the partnership. It's a great pool, you know. For other sports, a court's a court, dirt is dirt, and a field is a field, but a pool is not a pool. To have deep water with wide lanes, a 10-meter diving board, and a pool that can be 50 meters long, those are rare things, and we have all that in this facility, so that's important to us. From what I understand, Ron has been here a few times, but I'd like to introduce maybe some of his accolades. I don't know if you all have heard everything that he's accomplished as our diving coach. Ron was the ACC Women's Diving Coach of the Year both 2014 and 2015, and since he's been the head diving coach of our program, he's produced 36 ACC medals, 51 NCAA qualifiers, and 31 either All-Americans or honorable mention All-Americans. So we're very proud to have Ron, and in fact, just want to give him a round of applause. Then our new head swimming coach, Mr. Sergio Lopez, has had just a storied career himself and then also fantastic coaching career. He was the head coach at West Virginia, where he won Big East Coach of the Year twice. He produced individual champions and won a conference championship there. He then went on to the Bowles School in Jacksonville, Florida, which is a private school but produces some of the fastest swimmers around the world and coaches swimmers from around the world. He was the head coach of that, that club team in Jacksonville, Florida. After that, he was the head coach for the Singapore Olympic Team for 2016 Olympics in Rio, and in fact, had the first gold medalist for Singapore in the 100-meter fly. If you don't know what that is, you at least know that that individual beat Michael Phelps to get the gold medal. So fantastic coaching for him, and then he went on to be the Associate Head Coach for Auburn, and we were fortunate to have him after his tenure there. And all of that was about the athletics of our program, but our, our student athletes on the women's side have a 3, 4 or higher GPA for women's swimmers and divers, and then a 3-0 or higher on the men's side. For the women's team, that's roughly 35 individuals; for the men's team, that's about 32. So to have those type of averages means there's just some, some hard workers in that group. So without further ado, I want to have Sergio come up, but thank you all for having us.
Thank you very much, Danny, for great words, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, and member councils and everybody. I'm originally from Spain, Barcelona, Spain. We're in a working family. I didn't have a dad. My mom worked two, three jobs, so the only thing I can say, I'm very thankful to the swimming, to swimming. Swimming gave me a chance to be something and to come to America and be a student athlete, get a degree. I met my wife for state school, so I hope it's a great thing, 28 years together and have two children. My daughter is a, is a student athlete of Princeton University, and my son is a senior in high school that hopefully will come here as a student athlete, but he's looking at diving leagues too. So we're very fortunate, we have a very good life. As Danny said, I've been a coach in America for 22, 22 years. I coached from high school, club team, to college level, being Northwestern University for four years, West Virginia, Auburn. I've been lucky enough to coach 14 medals in the Olympics. I've been three times Olympic coach for different countries, so I'm very blessed. I was, I was going to stay at Auburn with, because we had a change of leadership, and I didn't know if I was going to have a job, but I promised my son that he's a senior, they would have moved. But with Babcock, the idea, Virginia Tech, he gave me a call and he told me, this is a job for you. He convinced me to come and check it out, and when I came out of the airport in Auburn, I really felt that this is my home, so here I am. I think I'm very lucky to be here. I feel very given down from a big city of 3 million people. I love now my age, the peacefulness of living in a town like Christiansburg and Blackwood. I live, I live right next to the Aquatic Center, so I guess I'm a Christian. I don't know what I'm talking about. I don't understand politics. But I just want to tell you that, yeah, we're very lucky to have the Aquatic Center. Most important, I know my job is to be the head coach, the director of the swimming and diving, but I also told Terry and what I tell you that I'm here to help you out with anything. One of the things that I did in the last 10 years, I have a foundation where I have helped on the privilege kids to learn how to swim. I'm not sure, it's in Florida, I don't know if I'm going to be able to bring it here or not, but to me, now that I don't have kids at home, I have a lot of, well, I don't want to say I have a lot of time, I have more free time, that I'm willing, willing, and I would love to help you out with anything. So if you guys need me to talk with high school kids, whatever it is, just let me know. I'm here for you. I'm part of this community, hopefully for the next 17 years, unless I do something wrong and they fire me. And, but I'm very excited. I think, like Danny White said, you guys have a world-class community, and I think I'm very blessed, very lucky to, to be able to do that. I think Aquatics Director, everybody over there, Terry, I've only been here for three months, but they've been very accommodating, and they really want us, they want us to succeed at the highest level. So I would very, you know, I just wanted to give you thanks, and let you know that hopefully I'm one of you. And I guess I'm done. They called me five minutes. But thank you very much, and, you know, I will remember your names, probably, you see me around, and just introduce yourself, and thanks for everything.
Thank you. Can I make a remark?
I'd like to thank Coach Lopez for coming in. I have not had a pleasure meeting you, but you're, you come with a lot of pedigree, and if not for your slight accent, we would not be able to tell that you didn't grow up in Christiansburg. You fit right in, and also want to commend you for keeping, or for retaining Coach Piamonte. Besides being the coach that he is, he's an excellent ambassador for your, for your program here in the community, and of course, he's led a family of champions himself, but whether you know it or not, you made a wise choice to, to retain him.
You know, it's always hard when you become the head coach of a place, you know, because you want, and what happened at Auburn was, I found myself there waiting for five weeks, and when I came here, I wanted to retain everybody. You know, you know that when you change leadership, sometimes you need to change people, but I heard so many great things about Ron that there's no way, you know. I don't know anything about diving. I took a diving class when I first came to America with a famous diving coach, and after two or three tries, I had to, I was robbed. I couldn't do the one, two, three, four approach. But I, I'm most respectful of Ron, and so I'm very happy that I get to work with him.
Well, you're going to fit in just fine. We love having you here.
So when do you all open the season at home?
Excuse me?
When do you have your first meet?
Our first meet, kind of an intersquad meet, is going to be on the 28th of September, and then the next one, I think, is 6th of October.
Very good. We'll be there.
So I have on my sheet here, October 12th and 3rd. That'd be Tech against Duke and Florida State, and then on October 26th and 27th, the Tech, Ohio State, and Penn State. Are those still good dates? So you got, you got some meets to come up that you guys want to play, want to go to?
Welcome, cheer for us. ACC is a very tough conference. It's getting tougher and tougher. I think, I think sooner than we know we're going to win it, but it's, it's a tough one. So I think not many teams are nice enough to throw you like we do, so it's good to use the home, things to play.
Very good. Thank you. Well done, gentlemen.
One detail failed to be mentioned is Sergio, of won a bronze medal in the 88 Olympics himself, so despite his coaching pedigree professionally, bronze medalist in the 200 restroom in the 88 Olympics. Humble, humble manly. If you want to be good, you cannot be humble.
Next, we have our citizens' comments section. If you'd like to address matters of the business of the town, please go to the microphone, give us your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes. Anyone here to address council? Yes, sir.
My name is Jeff Stewart. I have, I recognize many of you on the board. This is my 26th year teaching in Montgomery County, 28th overall. I'm currently at Christiansburg Elementary, and after 17 years in the classroom, I actually switched back to my first block, which was elementary for self-education. And the reason I did that was because I saw a disturbing trend happening with, with the kids in my community, and that was they were not going out, moving and playing on their own like they used to. I grew up riding my bike, playing outside, and it just wasn't happening on a consistent basis, and unfortunately, it's impacting the health of many of the students. I teach 460 elementary students here at Christiansburg Elementary, and by extension, that's what's brought me here tonight. I know that you're discussing, a discussion about the new Christiansburg Regional Park, which I think is a wonderful idea. And since I've moved back into the classroom, I did a lot of reading and research the last two years, actually, on children's health, and you may, may know some of these facts already, but suicide rates have been increasing for about 17 years now with the youth. Obesity rates are going up. You have children as young as eight years old with fatty liver disease signs. Increases, colon cancer, heart disease, diabetes, at younger, younger ages. And I know we can't change the world, but I do think we can make a positive difference for the, for the youth in our community if we proceed sooner rather than later with the regional park and its amenities that we, that you propose with this park. Some examples, too, two things that researchers say that can make a meaningful difference, because I'm trying to make a difference, but I only see them two times, half hour each, and they need much more time than that on a daily basis. And one of the, two of the things that you can do is provide facilities that offer a variety of activities, because we all, it's hard to stay motivated to do activities for lifelong time, but you can do that if you find things that you love. And by this park offering different types of activities and different sports, students can try these different ones, find the ones they love and stick with it, develop the friendships and the camaraderie that they need in addition to staying physically fit. And that's another point, too, is that we have kids who are going into other schools and shooting kids. I was actually signed up today to go for active shooter training, and I thought that was sad that it come to that. I never grew up thinking I'd have to do that. But there's some research out on that as well, about up to the age of 12, our brains are developing empathy in certain parts of our brain, and if we don't get exposure interacting with others on a regular basis, that can impact negatively that development of empathy. And today, unfortunately, our kids, no fault of their own, but they're immersed in electronics, and they're not getting that interactions like we had growing up on the playground or in this case, possibly at a park. By offering these fields where they can come out, try different activities, having a dog park where the family can go out and bond, all these things will help cut down on the depression and the suicide rates. Physical activities proven, proven one to help prevent that, and stronger family bonds has been proven to help reduce those depression rates and suicide rates. So that's what's brought me here. I feel very strongly about that. That's why I made a career move back to physical education. I want to make a difference, and I applaud your efforts in doing the same.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing another one? Nope.
My name is Larry Martin. I live at 2850 Brennuck Street, area of Christiansburg. I just come for you tonight. I want to thank you, I want to thank the Board and Committee and the Planning Commission for the efforts and joy I put in to changing this open ordinance in my community right up here and ask you to do. We thank you very much. We have a lot of respect for you all people. We thank you for what you do. It takes a lot of heart and your time to dedicate your time to this town, and we have a lot of faith in all of you, and we have a lot of faith that you will vote to sort of things for us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Anyone else? Seeing another one? I will close the citizens' comments section. We will go to committee reports. Do we have any success from your downtown?
Last week, we had an update at the Central Business Committee, and we're moving forward with the plac hologram program, so that should be ready fairly soon. We have our first art installment in the works, and we went over some farmer's market events, which there's some really exciting things happening, so please stop by the farmer's market on Thursdays, hope to see you. We also have a central business meeting tomorrow at noon, if anybody would like to attend that as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? All right. Discussion and action by Mayor and Council. We have council action on ordinance to amend Chapter 42 zoning of the Christiansburg Town Council in regards to boarding houses, hotels, motels, and tourist towns. The public hearing was held on August 28th, 2018. I think we have a resolution in front of us that was voted on by the Planning Commission and passed 9-0.
I make a recommendation, we accept the Planning Commission's recommendation for the conditional use permit process.
I'll second it.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion?
I would like to say something.
Yes.
I just want everybody to understand that this is a difficult process, because I've read a whole lot of things online that aren't true, and we're not, as the town, trying to kick anybody out where they're already residing. I've read that. There's a group out there that's, that's trying to say that we are trying to be evil to people who need some help, and I just want to make that clear before the vote tonight, that that is absolutely not the case. I feel like I just speak for myself, but we care about those people, we just want to make sure that they, everything is done correctly. And so this is a vote for everybody, not just a group, not a whoever happens to complain the loudest, you know, across the board. So I want it to be very fair, just my two cents before we take a vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That is six oh, thank you very much. We have a reappointment of Rich Alvis, Richard Colwell, Charles Pol, Bob Puff, J.D. Price to the Board of Zoning Code Appeals for four-year terms ending December 31st, 2022, and reappointment of Larry S. Martin, Earl Schrader, and John Travis as alternates to the Board of the Building Code Appeals with the term ending December 31st, 2021. Are they here? Are any of the zoning board members here?
Larry Martin's here.
No, it's different Larry Martin. Okay. All right. Okay. Do we have a motion?
Do we have a motion?
To reappoint?
I thought we came up with the idea that when people come before us, they need to come before us. So, you know, I have a problem not to, I have a problem reappointing someone that won't show up.
Well, these, these are not, well, okay. These, these gentlemen have all been members of this Board of Zoning Appeals for quite a while, so it's not, it's not new. It may be new faces to some of us, so it's, if you want to have them all here, we can reappoint them in two weeks.
Right, so we understand you.
Anybody else feel that way, or is it not recognized?
Yeah, I support Councilman Bishop on that. I mean, it's what we've been doing. That's what we established.
Very good. All right, then we will, Mr. Warren, will you request their presence at the next meeting?
Were they requested to be here this evening, by the way?
They were invited, yes.
Okay. Well, let's request. Let's request.
Difference. All right, okay. So we will table that. Reappointment of Leah Wall to the Montgomery Tourism Development Council for a two-year term ending July 22nd, 2018 to July 21st, 2020, and Ms. Wall is here.
Yes. Thanks for showing up, Ms. Wall. The other gentleman, they would have, because Bob Puff's been here, we all know Bob.
Alicia, you getting any workout over?
Yeah.
Okay, good enough.
Please come back.
All right. Very good.
I make a motion that we reappoint Leah Wall to Montgomery County Tourism Development Council for a two-year term ending in July 2008, or no, July 21st, 2020, not last month.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Would Ms. Wall like to make any comments? Do you have any advice for us, or do you feel you've been on there for two years, so is it something that?
I think we're in the right direction. I'm at the Holiday Inn across from the mall, and that sporting complex, we're waiting for that to open.
There you go.
But no, Lisa's doing a great job. You guys are too.
We agree with you with Lisa.
So I have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Definitely aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That is six oh, thank you, Leah, we appreciate it. Appointments of Luke Brew to the Montgomery County Tourism Development Council for a two-year term from September 22nd, 2018 to September 21st, 2020. Mr. Brew is here. Mr. Brew is, if you've been around by the farmer's market, you see his Brew Coffee. He has recently opened a business on Brennuck Street. Is that going all right for you? Very good, so he's not a stranger to us.
I make a motion that we reappoint Luke Brew to the Montgomery County Tourism Development Council for a two-year term from September 22nd, 2018 through September 21st, 2020, and we appreciate your service to us.
Got a second? Motion in a second. Any other discussion?
Well, I just would like to say that it's good to get someone in here who is very, going to be very familiar with what's going on in Christiansburg, and you've got your fingers in it, and, you know, can come up with some, some good ideas and some suggestions to, to make this even better, and we appreciate your, your, heading in that direction. Thank you.
Mr. Bishop, I believe you serve on that committee of tourism?
I do.
Okay. Very good. Motion in a second. We've had all kinds of, we've had comments. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That is six oh, thank you very much. It's up for board then. Let us six oh, thank you very much. The legal reduction or waiver of $50,000 review fee for unsolicited proposals stated in the Town of Christiansburg Guidelines to the Public Private Education Facility and Infrastructure Act of 2002. Any of you we discussed this at some point?
We have a policy regarding basically unsolicited PDAs, public private partnerships. We have received a public private partnership offer from Branch Construction, and in order for us to consider that by our policy, they would have to actually pay us $50,000 to consider that, basically the review fee of the proposals. If we were to advertise the proposal, then any counter proposals would also have to make that same payment, and it could be cost prohibitive for basically competing bids proposals if we were to consider those. So basically for council discussion, we could potentially have a use for the money if we wanted to hire, say, an agent rep to represent the town during basically review of the proposals or even construction of the projects, basically an agent, owner rep on site. So that is possibly the reason the $50,000 fee was included, but like I say, I do think it is probably a little cost prohibitive if you want competing proposals. $50,000 is a fairly high threshold. Not too many people are just going to write you a $50,000 check to give you a proposal.
I'm sort of thinking that if we charge them $50,000, that eventually will be, if they are hired to do whatever, that $50,000 will probably end up in their bill to us.
Don't know that, but it sounds reasonable to think.
And that's if we hire them.
If we hire them, yeah.
I brought this up several, at least two months ago, maybe three, long before this egg was put in our nest here recently, this last week, and my interest is looking back at why do we have a fee like that? Mr. Wingfield mentioned that it was for review fees. Well, there's not a $50,000, I'm not aware of a $50,000 submission fee anywhere. Blacksburg is zero, and I don't know, does Montgomery County charge a fee? I ask you that.
I'm not sure, to be honest, but I believe this was put in place actually prior to the Aquatic Center.
This is, and there's my second point is, I suspect, and I don't have anything to base this on, I suspect that when the Aquatic Center was built, that this very high, this very steep fee may have been instituted to discourage other people from putting in a proposal for, for a competing proposal for the project. That is my own opinion. I have nothing to base that on, so I don't want to call anyone out on that. It's just what I think, and I'll own that. But moving fast forward to today, I think we do need a fee, and I think it needs to cover our costs, because if we don't have a fee, then anyone could propose anything to us, and it's going to tie up our staff and us in reviewing proposals. So giving that some thought, and I think we had talked, if, you know, in reviewing a proposal, it needs to be reviewed professionally, I think. We're not, none of, you know, it's going to, it needs to be reviewed professionally, I think, with our staff and whoever the staff may have a consultant on board they want to review. So I'll go ahead and hang a number out there. I think $10,000 is more than enough to review, and I don't think we should, I personally don't think we should waive it, and I don't think we should eliminate the fee. I would support other, you know, I consider supporting other alternatives, but I think $10,000 is more than enough to submit a, you know, to cover our costs in reviewing. I'd even need support five to 10,000, but something to make, make people serious when they're proposing, but not enough to discourage them, enough to cover our costs, but I don't think we should discourage by putting a high price tag, which, which is why I think we might have a $50,000 fee right now.
Mr. Wingfield, what, do you, do you think that is a good figure, or is it a better figure?
I think it would be appropriate, like I say, just to review the proposal. We have probably $10,000 would be, I think, appropriate. If other competing proposals were to come in, they'd also have to pay the $10,000 fee, so.
Okay. So are we agreed that we would reduce that to 10,000?
I would say that.
Can I entertain a motion to reduce it to 10?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we reduce it to $10,000 for a PP, or for, what's that, a P?
PPEA.
PPEA, Public Private Education Act. Yeah, okay.
I have a second here for this.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Would we have to advertise this or have a public hearing since it is setting a fee? Not really.
It's a voluntary fee, so.
No.
We do not need to. All right, so Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Let us six oh, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Discussion regarding Cambria Trail Development. Mr. Stipes?
Earlier this year, I didn't prepare remarks, I'll keep it short. Earlier this year, we had proposed to put the Cambria Trail on the smart scale applications. We subsequently taken it off because we were told, where we, it was discovered that we probably would not score very well, and we had a lot of questions that need to be answered. Well, I'm impatient with this, I'm impatient with the trail network. We've done a great job, but I don't want to wait seven years, is what it took to get the Huckleberry Trail to the REC Center, which is great, but I don't want to wait another seven years to get the trail out to Run Oak Street. There's a lot of energy right now to connect this, our trail system to other trail systems, and right now, getting the trail out to Run Oak Street is going to open up our bicycle pedestrian access to Cambria and the folks all out here off East Main Street, and even in the mayor's neighborhood and the West, and the Run Oak Street corridor. So with that in mind, I don't want to put this on the back burner and let it sit on warm. I want to keep it in front of us, and I'm going to propose that we, we direct, or whatever we direct, an engineering, and I don't want to rest with a PER, a preliminary engineering report. We need to do some design. We need to get it tied down, how it went across the railroad tracks and the depot, and we can do that. We put a man on the moon, we can get out to Run Oak Street. But I don't want it to sit, and it's going to take some money to do that. It might take 50 grand, it might take 150 grand, I don't know. But I want, I want to recommend to council that we direct our staff to move post haste on that. I'd even like to know sort of what those numbers might look like for ultimate facility by the time we do a budget next year, just to see what we have out there.
Well, we have a budget amendment that's coming in October?
Probably October.
Is there any way you can get those figures for us?
We were estimating approximately 70,000 for the design, but that's, of course, that's just an estimate. We'll try to tie the number down.
70,000, we'll not do final design, but what would that take us to? What percentage complete?
It gives the 30%. There's a lot of discussion we need to have with the railroad.
I understand that. So, okay, I'd be satisfied with that, 30%, because then we could actually consider different vehicles for delivering the project. That would take us, and it would also answer the easement right-of-way questions. Okay, I'm satisfied with that. So up to 100,000, but approximately 70, no more than 100,000, and whatever you negotiate with your consultant.
My other thought was just if we did 70,000 and the budget amendment this year, that would probably get us to what we could expend by June 30, anyway.
Right, okay.
And then any movement forward with the information that we gained at that point, we can make sure it gets into next year's budget.
And what this does, what this does, fellow council members, is it makes our project real, and it makes it fundable. Right now, it's not fundable, because it's just, it's just a want. Until we tie it down and say, this is where it's going to go, and this is how it's going to cost, and this is the easements that we need and so forth. So I'm proposing to this board that we, that we don't let this, we keep this on the front burner, keep it on high.
Now, this, we have this, when we do an amendment in October, we have the funding to realize this?
I don't know that for sure yet, but we'll work it out in the budget amendment. Present that to you.
All right. And you will present that before?
Oh, yes.
Oh, darn.
So when are you going to do the lead work on that, or is that?
We, Steve, we have to vote on the budget amendment. We just can't change the budget without our approval, and even a public hearing on it.
Okay, so.
And we're not necessarily set at 70, if that's what you're going to check out and see exactly what we're going to do, yeah, okay.
Well, we don't want to, we want to do what's necessary to get it to at least 30%. I would, and I don't want to tie his hands at 70, because 70, great, and he's, you know, our staff is very cost-conscious, but we don't want to set a price tag that doesn't accomplish what we need it to accomplish. And we need to answer those questions, or our project's not going to get funded. I'll tell you that.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
You can go ahead and leave that door open now. I think the crowd is dispersed off.
Yes.
So if you look. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Tell them, add your report.
Just so you know, we're making preparations for Hurricane Florence. Right now, I think we're expected to receive four to seven inches of rain and 10 to 20-mile narrow sustained wind with 30 mile an hour gust, which is actually a little bit of a reduction from what we've been hearing earlier. We're actually hearing potentially 20 inches of rain earlier, so it looks like it's going to go a little south, but we're definitely still going to get some rain.
Okay. Have we set up any emergency shelters or do?
We have not. Chief Hanks and I were talking about that. We'll make that decision later in the week, probably Friday morning.
Okay. Okay, very good. Town attorney, Mr. Gwynn?
No report.
I will say that we met Mark Poffich last week, who will be taking over as town attorney. Good guy, he's going to spend some time, Jim, if you decide whether it's Wednesday or whatever day it's going to be.
It'll be Wednesdays.
So he will be, set up an office here in Town Hall on Wednesdays and be available. I think a good portion of our staff met with him the last time he was up, so got a lot of experience. I think, I think he will do very well. Any other staff reports? Hearing none? Town council reports, and Mr. Collins?
Well, the Planning Commission met, you know, this, this week, but they made the motion, I think it was unanimous, you know, to vote on the, the change in the code, you know, for the housing, and the REC Commission did not meet this time, and we had the third annual Lung Transplant Foundation Golf Tournament yesterday, was a success, and I appreciate everybody's, you know, support for that, and it's just a nice day for everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Collins, Mr. Bishop?
Yeah. Mr. Wingfield, as I already touched on, our fire rescue, I've been planning for the pending weather, so I get that from both of yous.
All right. Showalter?
This isn't necessarily a report from the water sewer and solid waste, but have we bid out, or are we getting ready to bid out the residential?
We've bid out, yeah, but we will.
Do we have a timeline on that?
We're still, we're working on the draft, so hopefully within the next month.
Excellent. Thank you.
Mr. Stipes?
No report. Thanks, Mayor.
Mr. Hubbard?
I just wanted to say something about the flowers that have been on downtown throughout the summer, and it seems to me this year that he used a lot of different types of flowers, and I thought it was very original type work, and looked very good, upgraded the town, and even got a picture in the front page of the messenger of the flowers around the Aquatic Center, and I really saw the, if you've been to the bridge going over, you know, the flowers right there, it's super, they really look good, and it even makes that bench that's right on the very top of the, of the bridge there, makes the, the bench even look nicer. So I just wanted to say thanks for that.
Can I get Sacks?
No report.
No report?
May I do have another today?
Yes, sir.
Kind of my attention, by citizen, they have a concern about the garbage cans being left out. Is there something we can do about this other than complaining to each other, not just Joe, well, you complain, but other negative groups?
You saying I'm complainer?
Not you, no, this is not a complaint.
There's a set on Run Oak Street that's there every day of the week.
It's a different complainer.
I'm glad I'm not there, I'll be right.
Randy on that, I think we've.
It would be nice if we had a specific location, but.
I can give it to you later, yeah.
I think the Run Oak Street.
What's your address, Henry?
Still in song, but they weren't on the street. To touch on, as Mr. Hall would say, to segue in on Mr., Mr. Hubbard said the flowers that are blooming out over the plant stands are some type, is type of a blooming pumpkin?
Sweet potato.
It is.
Sweet potato.
Sweet potato. Okay. Anyway, they are deer magnets, so if any of you want to put them out at your house, you live in the woods, you may want to think about that. That's what Michael Houston told me, that it is, they are, they are deer magnets, they'll eat them before anything else. Word to the wise. The VML Conference is coming up, the 30th through the 3rd of October, I believe. Mr. Stipes, we are all registered?
Yes, sir.
You have one cancellation?
I have two cancellations.
Two cancellations, so the VML cancellation date is 9/21. The motel cancellation is, hotel cancellation is the 28th is the last date. So I would urge you to do so if you're not, if you're not planning on attending.
I can ask a question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
When we changed the fee from the $50,000 to $10,000, the present one that we just received, what will be the fee for that project?
$10,000.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Okay.
Was there some discussion needed about if somebody bring your spouse to the VML would, do we, we, should be prepared to pay for that?
Right, yeah, the town will pay our, our fees, we reimburse for meals, food, whatever.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Could let Michelle know if you're bringing someone else, bringing a guest.
Okay. All righty. Mr. Stipes?
I move that the Town Council enter into closed meeting stipulating the agenda, and specifically, this closed meeting is requested in accordance with the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711, Parenthesis 929, for discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including interviews of bidders or offerers, and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. The discussion pertains to the former Truman Wilson Land Development Contract and receipt of a Public Private Education Facilities and Infrastructure Act of 2002, a proposal for the development of the land as a park.
That's full of motion?
Yes.
We have a second?
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.